Hello, America.
I'll say hi back.
I got one. Outstanding. How are you?
But I'm not supposed to be here yet.
Indeed, I was questioning your existence.
It's, you know, this way I'm actually, I don't forget and not show up on time.
I see advantages. It makes sense to me.
And I can listen and hear what y'all are discussing about stuff.
This is good. We may say something useful. It does happen.
It does, you know, I'm relying on y'all quite significantly, actually.
Thank you very much. Welcome, Jody. I was watching a YouTube video where you said smart things. It was very helpful.
I'm sorry, what?
I was watching a YouTube video where you said smart things.
Wow, that's an unusual one.
I can confirm it. It's true.
Can't imagine. Was that the, um, St. John School?
Seaville Plans Together. I haven't tracked down the St. John one. I'd like to see that.
Oh, Seaville Plans Together. Oh, that was the interview. I never did see that come out in print, so I was wondering. I thought maybe they just lost it. How are you, Laura?
I'm good. I'm good. Teaching is starting to slow down at spring break, so I'm catching my breath.
So your little one is, what, three years old now?
Just turned three. Full of fire.
Wow, three years old. That's amazing.
It is.
Oh, and how is she?
She?
Okay. How's she doing? How's she doing?
Happy, healthy. Just, you know, wants to run and climb and jump.
Oh, wonderful.
That was not me. I don't know where she gets it from. It's not for me. I was sitting down reading quietly.
Behaving.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I was always building blocks.
That's pretty good.
Yeah, building blocks or digging in the earth in the backyard.
Sounds all right.
Coming in filthy.
I was playing Robin Hood. I had a bow and arrow.
Oh, that's pretty good.
And I, or I was building little cities in the streams.
Ah.
I had 500 acres to be running around in.
Oh.
Oh, my gosh.
Well, there were 60. Anyways, it's a land trust out in Nelson up on.
It's wonderful.
And so I played in the streams and stepped on bees' nests and all sorts of things.
That's how you know. That's the experience.
To counteract the whoa, wonderful, I lived in a three-room cabin with no running water or electricity either. So.
Oh, what a life. That sounds like a novel.
Twenty-acre wood.
You know, this whole Walden two thing was written in.
Yeah. Oh, that sounds wonderful.
There's a market opportunity.
Yeah.
Get those TV rights. That's the real money.
Yep. I became a city councillor after growing up in a 500-acre.
But we did have TV. I had it. We had TV that we, our car batteries, charged down at the pole shed. So I had to like schedule my TV to make it last a week.
Oh, wow. This is a story.
Got into the food in the kitchen tent. Had to build a kitchen.
Makes sense.
Wow.
That is wonderful. Thank you for sharing that.
Yeah, I'm embarrassed about my little white suburban childhood.
Similar, very similar.
But I grew up, you know, houses being built all around me. So that's all we did as kids was going into these places when they were being built and figuring out things.
Ooh, nail gun.
We had some of those, but they never got finished. Like, we had house, we had like foundations that people had started and then broke up. And so you have this foundation sitting there for like 20 years.
Artifacts.
All right. Well, how are we on commissioners? I'm seeing four. I see five.
Yep.
Is that four?
At least five now.
I think we're allowed to talk.
Lyle, Jody, Cream, Liz, Roy. Oh, yeah.
It feels just. Welcome all. This agenda might seem very familiar to you. We've, all of this has happened before and it was all of us last time. So hopefully, this will be our most prepared we have ever been. I guess really starting, do we have questions? There are some changes.
Well, I can give a little context first, just on a few meeting context items, and then we can see where things are. We, the, we will have a report from the Tree Commission this evening on the state of the forest. Now, that will, depending on how long our 5:30 to 6 o'clock goes, if it goes very short and we don't have any public speakers, we might do it within that timeframe. But if we get past 5:40, then we're definitely going to do it after the hearing so that there is ample time for both and that we're able to work with the time we have from our council folks. So, yeah.
Missy, can I go back? Who's this report from?
The Tree Commission.
Oh. Jeez, I was gonna, during my committee reports, I was gonna ask permission to allow us to make this report. So I'm glad they ran with it. Good.
Yep, so that is scheduled and it'll be either that earlier time or a little bit later after the hearing.
Good. Thank you.
All right, so Lyle, thank you for that time share. I'll turn it back over to you for questions and such.
Of course. Minutes, any issues with the minutes? Ms. Russell, would you be willing to make a motion when it comes to that? Thank you very much. I believe the motion that was made last time on the public hearing was made by Mr. Stoltenberg. Is that true? Should things go a similar way? If you would consider making a similar motion, if you, if that makes sense to you, I think that would be a helpful way of moving things along. Any other questions? There was some new content, but not much, mostly, but the comprehensive plan update, I believe. Jody, you're muted.
There was the staff analysis based upon the most recent comprehensive plan instead of the oh three or oh eight, whatever we've been working off of.
That is correct.
I have a question, I guess. So I get why we're doing this hearing again. But we had a hearing prior to our October hearing, and I don't remember why we had to have another hearing again in October.
Planning Commission asked the applicant to defer from the May, after the May public hearing. The, there was changes made to the application. There was the inclusion of the Affordable Housing Proffer based on what the applicant heard in the May public hearing. So that's why it was deferred and then October.
Gotcha. Do we always have a public hearing after we defer? Or is that just because the changes were?
It was the changes to the proffer. There was no proffer for affordable housing in the May 11th public hearing.
Gotcha. Thanks.
Any more questions on the public hearing?
I think maybe I'd just like to note, because I see at least one person on the Zoom who had emailed us about the JPA project, that there was some talk of coming up this month. So, but the only hearing today is on Grove Street in Fightville. So that will be up next month. So I guess, can we hear about that during regular matters for the public, not on the formal agenda, if that's what they're looking to do?
That's my understanding. Ms. Chrissy, am I on the right track there?
Um, yes. So anything that's not for public hearing this evening, if there's any public comment, should be during the Matters from the Public during the 5:30 to 6 o'clock timeframe. So that's good feedback to provide for our audience.
Any other questions on tonight's agenda? Hearing none. I'm forgetting the... Yes, yes. I think I've got it. I suggest let's take a break and come back at 5:30 for the regular meeting.
All right.
All right. Thanks all. See you shortly.
All right. This is our regular monthly meeting. I'd like to start with commissioner reports. And can we please start with Tania Dowell?
Good evening, everyone. I do not have anything to report today. We look forward to giving you an update next month.
Thank you. Karim Habab, please.
Thank you. The Rayvanna River Bike Pet Crossing Stakeholder Committee met mid-February, February 17th, and we just kind of closed out that effort. We're going to have some continued kind of like plugging in feedback along the way. But I believe now the project is with the MPO. And there was a public survey that closed March 4 as well. So see what happens with the smart scale application.
Thank you. Jodi Landra.
So attended two meetings of this past month. The Board of Architectural Review met on February 15th. We passed four certificates of appropriateness. And then the requirements for one SUP was approved. We had two deferrals and we looked at preliminary designs and had discussions regarding two projects. One, a new residence at Zero Preston Place. And the other is a new multi-unit residential building at 1301 Wortland Street. The second meeting I attended is Tree Commission. That was March 1st. We reviewed the annual Tree Commission presentation to City Council. And because of the impacts on urban planning and setbacks and lot coverage, et cetera, decided that we would like to bring it to you all, the Planning Commission. So you will be hearing that presentation at the meeting today, tonight. The Tree Commission's Education Advocacy Committee announced the Relief Arbor Day plans. They will be, that particular Arbor Day celebration will be held on April 21st from 1:00 to 2:00. And it's going to be at Charlottesville High School outside. We're going to have 15 to 20 landscape vendors and professionals set up in stalls. And the science students will be making their way around these stalls and learning from the professionals and vendors who will be there. The actual Arbor Day is going to be on April 29th. The Charlottesville area tree stewards are planning an event to which Tree Commission will attend. And it'll be at Sojourner's Church around an elm tree there that is going to be nominated to be on the city's tree list. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz Russell?
Sorry, I don't have any updates. Thanks.
Thank you. And Roy Stolzenberg?
Also don't have a report this month. We do have an MPO tech meeting coming up next Tuesday, the 15th at 10:00 a.m.
Can we please hear from University of Virginia, Mr. Bill Palmer?
Yeah, thanks. I don't have much to report. There was a Board of Visitors meeting last week. And the only thing to note, there wasn't much on the agenda for buildings and grounds, but they did approve a project at the Fontaine Research Park, which I understand is not in the city, but just over the city-county line for upgrade to the, used to be called Health South. Now it's in Compass Rehabilitation Facility there. It's mostly a rehab facelift, but there's some exterior work. That's why we looked at it. So beyond that, nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. I personally attended two meetings of the Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission. Many items were discussed to this body, I think, of relevance. Really, a lot of money is coming for rural broadband, which may change things in some ways for the entire sort of area. Also, there is a new effort to do a rural transportation study, which again may have some effects for those commuting to the city for work or shopping, et cetera. Switching gears. I believe we are prepared to hear from Mr. Fries on the city. Mr. Fries, can you help us out?
Good evening. On the entire city?
All of it, please.
Oh, my God. Well, I'm going to stick to NDS today. And Missy and I both have updates to share. I'm going to start with a number of things that may be of interest. First off, if, for those who attended the City Council meeting the other night, last night, in fact, we announced that there is a planning process for safety improvements and design for a new smart scale application for the Fifth Street corridor. As part of that process, we do intend to engage the Planning Commission. So you guys will hear more about that and will likely be scheduling some time on a future agenda for that topic. So something to look forward to. The other announcement from last night was with regards to Climate Action Plan. There's a, there will be scheduled a work session on April 18th at the City Council meeting. So that's their 4:00 p.m. session to look ahead towards that Climate Action Plan. And I'll note for Mr. Mitchell, because I know this is a topic that he's very interested in. The, I'm sorry, what was that? The conversation around natural gas hookups and all of that is being rolled into that climate conversation and will be touched upon at that session on the 18th. Then also wanted to note that earlier this week, we awarded the contract to Timmons Group for our new permitting software system. So that is a big deal. That's going to probably be up to about a year of implementation time. Hopefully, there'll be aspects of this project we can roll out periodically through that time. But it is moving us towards a digital permitting system. So very excited about that. And then on the zoning rewrite project, we had a Steering Committee meeting last week. We, last night, were in front of City Council with an appropriation request to extend our fund for community engagement and project management and to add in funding to model the, for modeling the housing market outcomes for, of the new zoning or of the proposed new zoning. And that'll come as part of the approach report, which you can anticipate seeing. We'll be releasing the approach report if we stay on schedule in mid-April. And then finally, I wanted to note that I'm actually working with a group of UVA students on an expanded and enhanced zoning 101 document of subtype. We are flushing out what that's going to look like. But imagine infographics and explanation as to what zoning is, how it works, and what our proposal is in the approach document. Our proposal for the Charlottesville zoning ordinance, I should say. So that is all of my updates.
James?
I'm happy to take any questions. Yeah, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just jumped right in with a question.
Absolutely.
What's the target audience for the zoning 101 document?
Well, really, everyone. The idea is to, is to, is to make the zoning project more universally understandable, right? Zoning is a very technical topic. It's one that may be surprised to all of us, but most people don't really know much about zoning and what's going on there. So how can we make this project approachable and understandable so that people have, can kind of engage on it at a more or less equal basis? That's what we're aiming for.
Great. Thank you.
Absolutely.
So I just wanted to note things that we have coming up in April. We have a couple of items that we're expecting on our April agenda. The CDVG home budget will come forward as its yearly item. We also have a couple of special use permits that are gearing up. We're not sure exactly how many of them will be on the April agenda, but we are working on that later in the week. So we have a potential for four public hearings next month. And talking with the chair about that potential, that is kind of a maximum. And so we're going to do the best we can to see how that works. But as you all can see from the anticipated list, we've got a number of things that are in the hopper, though not all moving quickly. So do not anticipate those coming terribly quickly. But as the weather gets nicer, applications just keep flowing. So we will keep you guys in the loop on that. So that was the only update I had. Turn it back to you, Chair.
Thank you very much. I see we have Hosea Mitchell. Did you have an update for us?
I did not.
Thank you very much.
But I do want to thank Mr. Fries for the update on the gas hookups, et cetera, et cetera. Thanks.
I believe it is now time to consider matters from the public, not on the consent agenda. I know we've had quite a bit of people reaching out about a proposal on Jefferson Park Avenue. This would be the time tonight to talk about that project.
If you'd like to speak to the commission at this time, please quickly raise hand icon. Or if you're joining us via telephone, you can press star nine. Your speaker will be given three minutes. Mr. Chair, we have no hands raised at this time.
Thank you very much. Closing public comment on broader topics. At this time, it would be appropriate to consider the consent agenda. Ms. Russell, did you have thoughts on that?
Yes, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All four thumbs up, please. I see thumbs. I believe that passes unanimously. At this time.
Mr. Chair, you'd have about 18 minutes. And I'm not sure whether there would be questions from the commission about the report. So something to think about.
I would hope so. I think it may be prudent to push until after the public hearing. Thank you for your patience, you tree commissioners. We appreciate it. That being the case, yes.
Would it make sense to maybe, you know, hear the presentation now and ask questions later, just in the interest of doing something in the next 18 minutes? Or do we want to have an unbroken focus?
I'd be interested in the thoughts of the tree commission on this topic.
We'd be happy to do that. I think Peggy and I are both here.
Yes.
That seems reasonable to me then. Please let us hear from you and then you'll hear from us later. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Mr. Trail will bring up the report in a sec.
Thank you.
How much later will that be, Lyle?
Ah, that's a reasonable question. Perhaps 7:30? Okay, perhaps 7:00, something like that?
I would recommend that they stay and kind of get a taste for where we are with the hearing item. Just based on your pre-meeting and the limited comments, it's hard to say, but.
Okay, great. Well, with no further ado, if we might proceed, I think that first slide is a good one to start with. So I'm Jeff Ayton, Vice Chair of the Tree Commission, and Peggy Van Yaris, who's Chair of the Tree Commission, is also here tonight. The purpose of us coming to you today is to convey to you the planning commission, the state of the urban forest, and to solicit your help. I'll present first and share some data, and then Peggy will speak to the current work of the commission. Can we go full screen or review all not care so much? It'd be nice to see it a little bit bigger.
Yeah.
If possible.
Figure out the tech, just bear with.
Yep, I'll proceed.
It might be helpful if we could look at this in presentation mode as well.
Yeah. Can you start the slideshow?
Yeah, yeah.
Working on it. Working now, it's not. Hold on.
We could share it.
Yeah, someone else could share.
Well, Jeff, should I bring it up?
Let's see. I can do that.
You want to do it?
I think staff will have to enable screen sharing.
Yeah. I'm uploading the presentation. I should have it shared in a second.
Okay, that would be awesome.
You should have screen sharing ability now.
Okay, great. So next slide, if you wouldn't mind, Missy. So our urban tree canopy is declining at an increasing rate. We have good intentions and are planning for a robust urban canopy. And our comprehensive plan, as you can see, noted there on the right-hand side of this slide. But we believe more needs to be done to ensure this is the case as we build for more affordable housing and adjust streets to be more friendly to pedestrians. But we believe more needs to be done to ensure this is the case as we build for more affordable housing and adjust streets to be more friendly to pedestrians and bicyclists, et cetera. So the city parks department and urban forester have over a number of years been contracting for aerial imagery to be collected and then analyzed. And we've been doing this since 2004 on a five-year cycle. And as you can see, the trends are pretty clear in this bar graph shown here that we've seen a 10% drop in urban tree canopy coverage since 2004 to 2018. Next slide, please. And given that our city is approximately 6,600 acres, that urban tree canopy loss equates to about 660 acres, a pretty sobering loss. Next slide, please. And that the the data that was used in the most current or recent report that we have is that 2018 data. And once that's finalized, that will be shared on the city website, and you all can take a look at that in a little bit more detail. But if we project out an additional loss of 5% from 2018 to 2022, we're looking at close to 990 acres of urban tree canopy loss, a pretty staggering amount. Next slide, please. And we can see in this chart and map that low canopy neighborhoods correlate with historically low-income neighborhoods. Those are the ones that are in red here that have very low urban tree canopy coverage. It's also clear that as the subheading shows here that that canopy has declined in all but two neighborhoods. And in those two neighborhoods, it's remained stable. So again, not really the direction we would like to be trending in. Next slide, please. And that loss of tree canopy and the resultant lack of tree canopy coverage is not good for our health or for energy costs. This map shows the correlation between low tree canopy and more pavement exposed to solar radiation and therefore more absorption and retention of that heat in the pavement, leading to worsening heat island effects. That's what this graphic shows. Next slide, please. And to combat this, we're trying, but we're not doing a great job of planting, preserving, and maintaining our urban tree canopy currently. There are many reasons for this, obviously, some in our control and some not. Those reasons ranging from the pandemic to winter storms to funding. And we're currently and have not recently been meeting the goal of planting 200 trees per year, which is we think a reasonable goal, and we'd like to see that change. You can see on the graph on the screen right that there's further detail relative to what we have been able to do recently. For instance, the 151 trees that were planted in fiscal year 2020, 80% of those were new plantings, but just 13% were replacement planting. So even with that 151 trees of being planted, only a portion of them are actually new, replacing lost canopy. Next slide, please. And we believe that there are code issues. We can work with the planning commission on revising and updating. Development development in the city has been happening per code, and staff is enforcing code. But we believe the code really does need to change to help preserve some existing high-value trees and to really incentivize developers to work with the city to keep those trees and/or to plant new trees when existing ones must be removed. So here's an image. Of course, I think we all know this, lost some significant large canopy oaks along Garrett Street in 2020 with this development work. Next slide, and sometimes trees get removed and only one gets replanted. Again, rows of oaks were removed along Garrett, and we see just one tree planted. And then one more slide, and then I'll pass it off to Peggy. We believe denser development and new affordable housing does not need to be at odds with tree preservation and sustainable tree planting. In fact, really good planning needs to account for a robust urban tree canopy, and it's one of the key components to healthy living environment for all city residents. And then the last slide is this action is required when we believe there is collaborative work to be done between our two commissions to ensure a brighter or perhaps shadier future for the city of Charlottesville. Peggy's now going to share some of the work that the tree commission is currently engaged in. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So what is the tree commission doing to for this problem? First of all, our ongoing activities, we were set up 10 years ago, and we're basically an advisory body to you, council and staff. We engage with the public often. As you can see, we had a Venable Day Arbor Day celebration at Venable with the tree stewards a number of years ago. And we collaborate with lots of other nonprofits, and we monitor the effects of development on our green infrastructure. Okay, thank you. Now, the tree commission, our two main projects this year is one going to be reviewing the zoning ordinance with you. We have four main objectives. One is to increase the requirements for new trees, strengthen and enforce tree protection during construction, establish consequences for public tree damage. I mean, you can see, again, this is what happened along Garrett Street. I mean, just to let you know, in Richmond, they have an ordinance when a developer is allowed to take down a public tree, they have to pay into a fund for more planting around the city. And this can result in hundreds of thousands of dollars. Those oaks would be conservatively estimated at $25,000 apiece. So eight times 25 would be $200,000 we could have. So we're also going to want to refine the site plan application review. Okay, Missy? Our second project is a fund we just have started to develop this year. And for the last couple of years, the tree commission has become very much aware of the relationship between trees and health. Scientists have proven that areas that have low tree canopy have a much higher incident of heat-related and pollution diseases. This includes asthma, strokes, and heart attacks. So our relief, we have we have a big fat claim. We think trees save lives. And our mission is to protect the health and well-being, particularly of our low canopy neighborhoods, from the heat effects of climate change. Next, thank you. So this is how we'll do it. We're going to plant trees, preserve existing big trees, and educate kids and families about trees and nature in the city. Next slide. Our first project is going to be in the Kenton Page neighborhood. We chose this because it had very low canopy. We have very few places to plant public trees, so they'll have to go on private homes. We know in the Kenton Page neighborhood, it's been documented that over 50% of the families there pay more than 10% of their income on energy. The average in the city is just 2%. We haven't documented the health consequences, but I'm sure they're just like those that have been documented in Richmond with the low canopy neighborhoods. So this is a project that we will be planting trees this fall and helping to preserve trees with the tree commission and relief and tree stewardess. Next. Educate. As Jody told you, we're going to have an event in the spring, this spring in CHS. We're going to introduce kids to jobs in the green industries. We have about 15 vendors coming. It's going to be a fun event. It's going to be the day before Earth Day. We'll have music, food. Everybody's going to come. So we're working with the City of Promise to develop what we call teenage ambassadors. These will be kids in the neighborhood, which will learn about the value of trees and nature, and they can help us knock on doors in the fall to encourage people to plant trees. We've given presentation or are going to give presentations about trees and nature to elementary schools, City of Promise, Loua McGinnis. I'm going to give you just a short few slides of what we did. We gave this presentation to all third and fourth graders at Venable's. So why are trees next? Important to you, next. Trees improve health. We took thermometers on one day in September. Just is it going? Out on the two playgrounds at Venable. You can see one is hot. There are no children there. It's 102 degrees. Next slide. So trees improve health by cooling your playground. You can see the shady playground. It was 82 degrees, a 20% difference in heat. We know children are very vulnerable to heat. So next one, we had lots of other slides, some fun slides. We showed them how trees help animals. Next. By giving them a home, everyone thinks this is a workshop, but it wasn't. This is in Morocco, and that's the only place that goats can find food is on top of trees. Next. So it was a fun presentation. As I tell people, I was more nervous about the third and fourth graders than I am about talking to you tonight. So who are we? This was a this is a fund initiated by the tree commission, initially funded by the Virginia chapter of the Nature Conservancy. So it's a partnership between the tree commission, nature conservancy, City of Promise, the tree stewards, and Manieri Street Company. Next slide. So what can you do for us? Okay, next slide. Planned and maintained trees. We are very appreciative that you all have approved our CIP funding request for $100,000 for new trees in the fall, and that would get us to our 200 trees and also $105,000 for ash tree removal. As you can see, all these trees by CHS are going to come down. Next slide. We want to help you create a zoning ordinance that treats trees as a vital asset, increase setbacks so we can have trees that we're not talking about. Some people think that means you're going to lose a lot of land. We're not talking about huge setbacks, 10 feet, 15 feet, just, you know. But and also, you can see what happens when setbacks are taken to zero. If you look at the picture there, that's a standard. It's the only building along the whole West Main Street that doesn't have trees, and you can see the impact there. So we want to increase requirement for new trees, better protect trees during construction, provide incentives or disincentives for damaging trees. And perhaps, you know, a way to protect our natural resources is look for locating new developments or parking lots or other vacant types of land. So next slide. Improve the city organization, and that's already happening to encourage parks and NDS and public works together, to work together. We'd love to see a creation of a natural resource manager. The Almar County's had one forever. If you did that, the number three, the third point there would take care of itself. Next slide. Enhance our charge too. We particularly like to have some input on large site plans such as Friendship Court. As Jeff said in the beginning, we truly believe if we begin in the beginning of the process, trees, open space, and nature can go together. There's often compromises, but there's no reason there has to be either or. Again, encourage departments to work together. Perhaps we could have a public works attend our tree commission. And we really see that, you know, we're interested in trees, but we're interested in the whole urban ecology, all the natural resources. So we'd like to see our charge expanded over time. So again, we need your help to stop this loss of our tree canopy and our natural resources. Next slide. I'd like to end. This slide came from our canopy study, and it shows that the eco benefits from the trees in the city save the city $16 million a year. Now, this is the tip of the iceberg, because if we were to plug in there, the health saving costs for people and the energy saving for homes and businesses, we could probably triple this to $36 million a year. So that's the benefits of trees. And I just want to end by saying that we really see hope. We're so excited about the new department heads. That includes Dana Hat Cassler, Stacy Smalls, James Phrase, Rian Anthony, who is in the parks too, and we won't forget Chris Genzek. They seem very willing to work with us and want to be a partner, and so we're really, really excited. So there's great hope ahead. So thank you.
And thank you. I believe we are now prepared to begin our scheduled public hearing. Mr. Offley, can you please take us in?
Warm me up. There we go. All right. Can everyone hear me?
Perfect.
Commissioners.
Do we have to call the council to order, or were they already called to order?
That's reasonable.
We can do that now.
There is a forum of council here.
Thank you very much. Mr. Offley, please.
Commissioners, council, tonight, you're going to kind of be redoing a public hearing. Though on May 11, 2021, and October 21, 2021, planning commission held a public hearing for proposed development as before you tonight. In preparing to move the application forward to city council, it was discovered one of the tax map parcel numbers was mistyped in the public ad. To ensure accuracy, all three applications have been re-advertised and returned to planning commission for action. No information has changed or been updated in the application materials from what planning commission reviewed on October 21, 2001. VM 2000003, SP 2100002, NP 210023, also known as 1613, 1611, and Zero Grove Street. Landowner is LeVoren Investments LLC has submitted an application seeking to rezon and a special use permit and a critical slope waiver for approximately 0.652 acres of land, including multiple lots identified within 2002 city real estate records. These lots are collectively the subject property. The subject property has frontage on Valley Road extended and the unimproved section of Grove Street extended. The application proposes to change the zoning district classification of the subject property from R2 residential 2 family to R3 residential multifamily medium density, subject to certain proper conditions and development plan. The proppers include, one, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the seventh dwelling on the subject property, the owner shall contribute $48,000 to the city as a cash contribution to support the city's construction pedestrian improvements within the Fifeville neighborhood. And number two, 28% of the dwellings constructed on site shall be affordable units. As followed, 14% will be for rent such that the monthly cost of rent, including tenant-paid utilities, does not exceed 125% of the fair market rate established by HUD by unit bedroom for the Charlottesville MSA. And 14% will be for rent AUs such that monthly costs of rent, including any tenant-paid utilities, does not exceed the fair market rate by unit bedroom for Charlottesville MSA. All required AUs shall be reserved as such through a period of at least 10 years from the date on which units receive a certificate of occupancy. The proposed development includes restoration of a portion of Rock Creek that runs through the subject property. The SUP permit application seeks to increase the density from 21 dwelling units per acre or 13.69 units within the subject property to 43 dwelling units per acre or 28.0 units per city code per the use matrix in city code 3420. The proposed development contains four apartments, multifamily dwelling buildings with eight one-bedroom units and 22-bedroom units. The total number of units would not exceed 28 units. The comprehensive land use map for this area calls for general residential, which recommends up to 2.5 stories in height, up to three units per lot or four units if existing structure remains, and additional units allowed depending on zoning allowance. The proposed development calls for disturbance of land within critical slopes. You'll also be reviewing a waiver for that tonight. During the planning commission's last two discussions, traffic, density, stream restoration, affordability of units, and impact to the surrounding neighborhoods were discussed. At the October 21, 2021 meeting, planning commission voted four to two to recommend approval of the rezoning, four to two to recommend approval of the SUP, and six to zero to recommend approval of the critical slope waiver. This concludes my presentation. Staff is available for questions, and the applicant has also prepared a short presentation.
Thank you very much. Any questions for staff from the planning commission? Any questions from council?
Is the only reason we're doing this because of the difficulty with the notice, or is there anything substantively different?
Yes, the notice. We this was just out of abundance of caution.
Gotcha, okay.
But everything else is the same.
All right, thank you.
I believe we are ready to hear from the applicant. Please. Nothing yet.
You're muted right now, Justin, but...
Mr. Trail, are you able to bring up that presentation?
You're unmuted, Justin, but we still can't hear you.
Can you change your microphone input?
You've gone to mute.
Or call in. That might work too.
All right, so guys, I'm relocated to Kelsey's office. Do you hear me now?
You sound perfect, please.
Hi, Justin Champagne, engineer of Project Kelsey. Sean's here with me. Whoever need questions that come up. As was said, this is a repeat of our prior application, and nothing has changed since then. We do understand these things do come up with advertising issues now and then, as happened. So we'll go through this pretty quickly. I think I saw maybe one new member of City Council on, in the case there are any neighbors who might be chiming in who didn't hear before, we'll go through our presentation and answer any questions that you have. So the, I think everyone's very familiar with the location. Three parcels undeveloped at the end of Valley Road Extended. Next slide, please. Concept plan, as was said, is for four seven-unit buildings. They are, you'll see the pink highlight here represents the dark pink is kind of the ground floor layer. And then the lighter pink shading represents a building above a parking lot area. So we have a surface parking lot, the center buildings, cantilevered over a portion of the parking that are three to four stories, and I'll get to that here in a second. Next slide, please. Now, just to explain this heading, there were course revisions between a May 2021 hearing and an October hearing. So what you're seeing this slide is nothing new from what you didn't hear last time, but we didn't change our presentation because it's the exact same information. But this is a refresher to folks. We, after hearing comments in the commission, we talked to the owner, who is willing to commit to the 28% affordable. That's four units at the 125 FMR, and then four units at the FMR rent. So eight that meet the voucher eligibility, four at the FMR level. We adjusted the massing a bit to reduce the height of two of the buildings, trying to get into that more scale we're looking for. And we did some grading revisions to again help integrate the buildings into the site. Again, things we did last time, but a reminder, folks. Next slide, please. Yep, summary is discussed, and we can go back over these details later. Next slide, please. Just as a quick refresher, we ended up with buildings that were basically three stories in the front and then kind of a three-story, but with units in the attic that back building has units sort of in the roof system. So again, trying to keep it at that 30 to 35-foot building height. So those were changes made in leading up to the last meeting where folks voted on it. Next slide, please. Notes and revisions again, I guess, reminder for anyone who's new to the project, which may be just as again one to the counselor. So a little reference again would be on the left is Valley Road, and then our four buildings parked in the center. That blue dash line is the existing stream. They propose some improvements to. Next slide, please. Interesting bit we found last time, and I suspect has probably gotten only the only worst in this proportion in the months between October and now is that, you know, we have a number of structures built in the city that are over 3,000 square feet, not differ in size from plexes. Very few plexes get built. Plexes being triplexes, quadplexes, a sevenplex in our case. And so as a reminder, our buildings are while larger than a single-family house, not substantially different in scale than a large three-story home you might find in some of the neighborhoods in town. Next slide, please. Couple other features that remind folks of, we proffered a $48,000 cash proffer towards neighborhood sidewalk improvements. And then we also have offered a stream restoration on the banks on our property, which would be to basically regrade, restabilize, and re-vegetate that area as part of the plan. It's a sort of rough section of creek right now. It's been long, kind of abandoned, there's trash and it pipes, etc. So when we're done with the project, we would have a fully vegetated and replanted stream bank in that area. It'll help contribute in a small way, at least, to water quality downstream for the project. Next slide, please. That was a summary of our presentation. Then, just as a reminder, these are the structures sort of in question. It has that gray in the bottom is your kind of lower-level unit, and then there's units above and seven units in each building, three to three and a half stories. We read through the staff report about the change in the comprehensive plan. I think the only thing I'd really comment on that is that if anything, comprehensive plan came a little closer to what our proposal was originally than it had been essentially. Talking about infill opportunities and bonus densities for affordable housing. This is both an infill and a affordable housing project with a 28% proffered affordable. So that is the summary, a quick summary. And for those who are new or want to refresh memory or anything, we are happy to discuss it. We know Planning Commission's spent a lot of time on this over the fall, but again, happy to revisit anything that you'd like to.
Questions for the applicant from the Planning Commission?
So remind me, these stream improvements, they happen no matter what. They're not linked to the sidewalk improvements. They're going to happen when you redo this thing. Is that right?
Yes, provided the plan is approved and it's developed, it's sort of separate from the sidewalk could be an off-site improvement. That actually isn't off-site money, and the stream work happens on our parcel of land.
Additional questions from Planning Commission?
Only question I have, and I'm sure it's already been addressed, but just as a refresher, is can you speak to how this project is harmonious with the existing neighborhood?
Well, sure, and I think that one of our efforts with the redesign from the May to October plan was to scale down the buildings in a way to make them more duplex type of scale. They are still larger, we admit that, but we were trying to strike a balance of density, affordability in an undeveloped parcel. And doing so essentially by going up an extra, what, maybe three or three stories versus say a two and a half, the comprehensive plan, three and a half stories. We pick up that additional density and the additional affordability. So we have edited the project over time to get these into more of a scale. They're larger, but certainly I think closer to scale with what's there than we had started with.
Additional questions for the applicant from the commission? From council?
Yes, I am that new council person that doesn't have history with this project, and I just have a few questions that you may have already addressed. And first of all, I'm trying to figure out, you know, from my planning days, even back then, $48,000 doesn't get you much sidewalk or is it a new way to build them cheaper now? So what are we getting for about $48,000 and why not 40 or 50? Why 48? What's magic about that number? Is it a formula or something?
There was a formula, yes. And how that came from, the city has a sidewalk fund basically per unit. So in our mind, if the city says, you know, instead of building in front of your house, you pay X dollars per unit, we use that same math. But that's the origin is from the city's formula.
Okay, and I know this will probably come up at the council meeting. It tends to come up is what is, what definition did you use as affordable? I think it was 28%. What is?
So that's right. So it's a 28% in total of affordable, which is eight units. Of those, four of them, the rent including utilities is capped at the HUD fair market rate, which somebody in the Planning Commission will know better than I exactly. There's something like a 65% AMI for those lower. It's like 59, depending on how many bedrooms. And then the 125% FMR is a higher number, obviously, but that was selected because it falls within what the voucher limit is for the city. So folks, that rent, that unit renting for that price are eligible to use a housing voucher for it.
Okay.
Will full-time university students be eligible for those units?
Did he catch that?
The question is, would full-time university students be eligible for those units? I believe the answer is yes.
I believe so, yes. I think if somebody qualifies based on income, you wouldn't necessarily, it wouldn't be different based on occupation.
HUD does restrict. HUD does restrict full-time university students from Section 8 vouchers. So that's where I'm trying to, it's one is, you know, if it's affordable within the Section 8 range, but whether or not will actually be available to somebody with a Section 8 are two very different things. And that's why I'm asking, just, so they're not getting restricted like a Lytec property or anything like that. It's just that they will be in the affordability range of a Section 8 voucher.
Justin, good, sir, please.
Sorry, that's right. The rent is capped per those formulas. There's no other restriction about the who or the why necessarily.
So I just have one other comment, and what would be great for me is that as you're driving down, I guess, is that Cherry Avenue that intersects with it, Valley Road? That as you kind of drive in and walking past there to get an idea, and I'm sure that they have some software or something to kind of give you a nice visual of what it would look like with, you know, maybe anticipated colors of the building.
Sure, you certainly would not see the buildings from Cherry Avenue. They are very far.
It's further down the road.
Very last lot. So yeah, you can see it from the houses around. It actually sits behind a very tall railroad track. So there's maybe 15 houses that can see it, but you cannot see it from Cherry.
Okay. Just many, many years ago, we built the Habitat House on this road, and I recall that the stream now, the creek there, it was in bad shape. It's been many years since I've been by there. And so I'm just trying to picture that if it's still in a rugged shape like it was and has some debris there, you know, trash, that if just your suction is improved, would that kind of throw things off, you know? I need to go by there and take a look at what's, to see what's going on there, you know.
I think it would be very important, Mr. Wade, that you go by there and see what the conditions of that site.
I used to live in one of the places down towards the back.
Oh.
You better hurry up because it's going to be covered with kudzu soon.
It already is.
I thought they were in a situation.
Yeah, yeah. Seeing that you are having the same static issues that you did at the beginning of the meeting yesterday, but we hear you, we understand you. So thank you all. That's all the questions that I had. So thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions for the applicant? Last call.
I just wanted to clarify, you said the lower affordable units are FMR, fair market rents, which is about a little under 60% AMI, call it 60. And the others are at 125%, 125% of fair market rents, so about 75% AMI. That's correct. And the sidewalk, the proffer for the cash or protection improvements, that's separate from the sidewalks that you're going to build in front of the property, right? You're still intending to do that? Correct, yeah. Site plan ordinance requires to build our own sidewalks, and then we would offer the money up for some improvement down the road. And we talked at last time about maybe something, the entrance to Valley Road Extended. That would be up the city. I think we can try to make the proffer sufficiently vague that it could be used where in that neighborhood made sense. Thanks.
Additional questions for the applicant?
Did we resolve the issue of the non-residential uses still in the, that not being proffered out? Or did that, did anything change? I saw the notes from the last, from the October meeting, and there was a question about the other uses associated with R3.
It does not come to mind as something that was still out there. Hang on one second. Let me look and see some of our notes here.
My note says, you know, the following uses would be right, be by right, bed and breakfast, townhome, family day home, public health clinic, daycare facility, etc.
So it's been a little while now. I'm trying to jog our memories here. But I guess it looks like we did not proffer those out. Obviously, our, you know, development is intended to be in accordance with the SUP. Should that density be built, we have to follow the plan that's offered. And I don't remember, Matt, is it not, even is the proffer not required sort of construction in accordance with the plan?
What you have before you, you have three applications. I mean, there is a possibility that City Council could approve a rezoning, deny the SUP. But the proppers go with the rezoning, so you have kind of this affordable proffer that talks about dwelling units. So it's, I can't give you a clear answer, but there's, you know, it's three different things. There is a possibility of just getting the rezoning, but then any development that went there would have to conform to the two proppers that went with it.
So my memory.
I mean, I won't say it's impossible that someone could get the rezoning and build some of these other by-right uses, but I think it would be very improbable based on the materials in front of you.
Thanks.
Any additional questions for the applicant? Seeing none, I believe we are prepared to hear from the public, please.
If you'd like to speak at this time, please click the raise hand icon in your Zoom webinar, or if you're joining us via telephone, you can press star nine. Each speaker will be given three minutes to speak. And I see no hands raised at this time. Oh, wait. Paul Benesch, you are on with the commission. Can you hear us?
I'm unmuted now.
Yes.
I just had one question. Any analysis done on the increase in traffic on Valley Road Extended? By my count, I counted the houses on that road currently, and this would seem to increase the total number of people on that road by about 30 or 40% potentially. And it just seems like that road is already not wide enough. It's only about one and a half lanes wide, kind of hard to get through there. I'm just looking at whether or not any analysis was done on that.
We can't answer questions at this time, though.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was unaware of that. Okay, sorry. Okay, sorry.
Do we have any additional comments?
If anyone else would like to speak, please click raise hand or star nine if you're joining us via telephone. There are no additional hands raised.
I believe we are prepared to close this public hearing. Thank you all. Mr. Stolzenberg, you put something in the chat. Could you please say what you've typed?
Sure, absolutely. I was just saying, on page 94 of the agenda, it has the the traffic projections, the trip generation. And that's 171 cars per trips per day and 19 trips during the PM peak hour. So a little under three per minute.
Thank you very much. I believe we are prepared to discuss these requests. Opening up, who wants to discuss? And it would also be okay to raise a motion at this time.
I just had a question.
Please.
For clarity, and so I apologize, I didn't miss the last meeting. I was just wondering if we could get a little bit more background. I meant to ask this earlier from staff as to why they chose to recommend an hour of the rezoning.
Mr. Rockley, could you help us?
Yes, one of staff's main concern was the condition of Valley Road Extended. Valley Road Extended, you have on the eastern side, you have Rock Creek. And on the western side, you have a fully developed neighborhood with limited sidewalks and with parking. So any improvements to Valley Road for pedestrians or vehicular traffic would be a major undertaking to and would probably remove a lot of parking from existing homeowners. That was one concern because it was kind of the biggest concern from staff. The scale at this end of the neighborhood, it's more apartment scale is set in a single-family duplex street. So those are the two biggest concerns staff had with the proposal.
Thank you. Additional comments, questions, or motions?
I guess I have two quick comments just on things that have changed or maybe new things since the last time we talked about it. The first is that, I mean, to me, I think it makes sense that this fits in what we're talking about as general residential in our adopted plan. There's no buildings to demolish on this site. So that's for a four flex by right. And then we we have provisions for bonuses at affordable housing. And so in each of the seven, each of the seven flexes, the four different seven flexes, you have the four base units, you have your very affordable unit at fair market rents that can go to people with federal vouchers. You have that workforce housing at 75% AMI that can go to people with city-funded vouchers. And then you have that that market rate bonus unit. And to me, I mean, if that isn't what we're thinking about with the bonus provision there, you know, I don't know what what would fit. I mean, certainly there's four of them on what won't be a subdivided lot, but conceivably could have been. And I think I mentioned last time, I'm very sympathetic to the point that it's a thin road. And I'm thinking about like other thin roads like Altavon Street, North Downtown that have a pretty sizable or like Perchery in North Downtown that has pretty sizable apartment complexes at the end. You know, in those cases, even more units and and people kind of manage. And, you know, people walk in the street and then people slow down when they see them. And one big advantage I see in on this road is that at the probably the most dangerous point, which is that part where it curves about a third of the way down. That is the part that actually does have a sidewalk. So no one, so you can, a pedestrian can get on the sidewalk at that blind curve. And then the last thing I mentioned, just because Commissioner LaHendra brought it up in our pre-meeting discussion of the VAR thing, that zero pressed in place, which I was just looking at in our recess, that's a single-family house in R1, I think it's R1, that is going to have a footprint of 4,000 square feet. And I think we just saw earlier that these are, these are 2,000 square foot or so, maybe 2,200 square foot in that slide, footprint. House is, they're three and a half stories, less than 35 feet, which is what we allow in R1. I mean, it's just, the structures are just big houses that are subdivided into more units on the inside. And in that sense, I think visually, certainly, it is compatible with the surrounding area, which are a bunch of very large duplexes that are relatively new on the opposite side of the street.
Additional comments, questions, possible motions?
Can I follow up? I want to follow up on that assessment of 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 units and and read of general residential because I think that's important and I I don't read it the same way. So my take on it is general residential, the category is is three units per lot with an additional bonus. And we don't, we haven't defined what that bonus is, but presumably it would be, you know, another unit. So we have three parcels here. Max, I would think would be four units per parcel, 12, 12 units max. And and this is a proposal that proposes no more than 28. So so why that delta? Am I am I completely off on my logic there? Like, help me understand.
So I mean, I think the the lot differentiation here and that it's originally three lots is a good point. But in terms of the structure envisioned in general residential, there are four different structures. So I'm taking them individually. I don't read the conception of a bonus as meaning one more unit for two reasons. First is it's, this isn't a sensitive area as we defined them. So it's, if you're not demolishing a house, I would think the base would be four. And then, you know, you can't have a bonus. If we're adding a bonus to, which would be both extra units, units plus, and I think we said massing, since it's a two and a half height limit base, you you can't just have a bonus just to allow one affordable unit. You know, typically with bonuses, it's like an incentive. You give us something, in this case, an affordable unit and a workforce affordable unit, and you get one market rate unit, right? So at the very least, I would imagine that would have to be two extra. But certainly we'll obviously define it more later when we get to the zoning, right?
Mr. Bob, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, I just, I guess, Justin, thanks for that presentation again. I made these comments last time and I'll just make them again. I, you know, there's a lot going on for this project that meets the con plan. You're doing some stream restoration, funds for pedestrian improvement, affordable units. It certainly checks a lot of boxes. It's a greenfield, you know, site. There's nothing on there. So we should take that, you know, use that as an opportunity to add more housing where we can because there aren't that many left in the city. And you're making use of the grade to add an extra level. And you're, I mean, arguably adding canopy to a site that doesn't have any right now. I find reading, you know, the drawings correctly, there aren't any impact on trees. So it's, I just wanted to say those. And yeah, thanks.
Additional comments, questions, or motion?
My only comment I want to add because I think I know where this is headed and it's not going to be a surprise since we already voted on this before, where I feel. But I I really feel like in this case, the proffer does not address the impact to the neighborhood. And I think that's an important component of a proffer is to directly speak to the impact in the neighborhood. And as we've discussed, as Councilman Wade pointed out, the $48,000 isn't going to, isn't going to provide sidewalks in this, on this, on Valley Extended. And it is really narrow.
Other comments, questions, or emotion?
I guess.
Great.
Just really quickly, sorry, Councilman, I mean Commissioner Mitchell. My other question would be, and like I said, I'm kind of coming up to speed. I know I missed the last meeting, is what other adverse effects other than parking? And I know safety and pedestrian safety is definitely how on our list. But what other adverse effects are we seeing that this project may have on the neighborhood?
So I think parking, it'll be all right. It has a, it has more than one parking space per unit. It's really the traffic along the road that I think is a real, like legitimate concern, which and per the ITE estimates, which are a bit tough, but are on page 94. It's about three in that in that PM peak hour, like rush hour, it's going to be three a minute or, sorry, one every three minutes.
I would compare it to the issue we discussed with tribbling, right? Of that development that we had a lot of concern about traffic and neighbors walk on the street because, you know, people walk on the street because there aren't sidewalks or, you know, whatever. And in that case, the proffer spoke to that need.
Well, my other, I guess, the reason for me asking that too about the sidewalks were is if we already don't have it in the our regular CIP funding. Mr. Wade and just in general has already said that the 48 is not going to make a difference in improving the project. So I'm just wondering, is there something else we can do to balance this out?
So I tossed out a couple of suggestions last time that I don't know if there, I mean, you're right that there are no projects for the neighborhood. But I think they had reframed it to be vague enough that it kind of could be used in the general area. And at the end of the street, the intersection with Cherry, there's a curb with no curb cut. So people in wheelchairs or with strollers going along Cherry can't keep going. And so that is something that's in the CIP that they kind of pick out intersections every year that money could potentially be applied for. The other is that there's a bus stop with no shelter or anything but a sign that CAT could potentially pull money out of that pot for building stuff up for improving that bus stop. Also, you know, I mentioned that like tribbling was 170 units. So over six times as much traffic as this. And larger units too, mostly condo.
Additional comments, questions, or emotion?
All right, I think no one has any comments, so I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Please.
I move to recommend approval of this application to rezone the subject property from R2 to R3 on the basis that the proposal would service the interests of the general public and good zoning practice.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
A discussion on this topic? Motion? Hearing no discussion, Ms. Chrissy, would you please call the roll?
Sure, Mr. LaHendra.
Aye.
Ms. Dow.
No.
Mr. Mitchell.
No.
Mr. Stolzenberg.
Aye.
Mr. Habab.
Aye.
Ms. Russell.
No.
And Mr. Soliates.
Aye.
That was pass for three.
All right, I have another motion. I think that's was the time for that.
I believe that's appropriate, please.
Okay, I move to recommend approval of this application for a special use permit for tax map parcels 230133000, 230134000, and 230135000, 1613 Grocher Extended, to permit residential density up to 43 units per acre and adjusted yard requirements as depicted on the site plan dated September 29, 2021, with the following listed conditions. Conditions recommended by staff, up to 43 dwelling units per acre are submitted on the subject properties with a maximum of two bedrooms per unit. The restoration of Rock Creek presented in the applicant's narrative dated July 14, 2020, and revised September 29, 2021. Modifications of yard requirements to front yard, 25 feet, north side yard, five feet, south side yard, 14 feet, rear yard, 25 feet.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion on this topic? Hearing none, Ms. Chrissy, would you please call the roll?
Mr. LaHendra.
Aye.
Ms. Dow.
No.
Mr. Mitchell.
No.
Mr. Stolzenberg.
Aye.
Mr. Habab.
Aye.
Ms. Russell.
No.
Mr. Soliates.
Aye.
Passes for three.
All right, and then the critical slope waiver. I move to recommend approval of the critical slope waiver for tax map and parcel 230135,000, 230134,000, and 230133,000, as requested. Conditions outlined in the staff report based on a finding that the public benefits of allowing the disturbance outweigh the benefits afforded by the existing undisturbed critical slope per section 34-1120B6D1.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion on this topic? Hearing none, Ms. Chrissy, would you please call the roll?
Sure, Mr. LaHendra.
Aye.
Ms. Dow.
No.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Stolzenberg.
Aye.
Mr. Habab.
Aye.
Ms. Russell.
No.
And Mr. Soliates.
Aye.
Passes five to two.
I believe we have resolved this item. Council, thank you very much for your time. And members of the public, thank you for your attention.
Thank you all. We'll see you next time.
Thank you. I believe we are ready to talk about the tree commission report. Do we need a moment? Are we, are we still still feeling fresh? We have people from the tree commission here. We're a little bit earlier than.
Roll, let's lose them.
I see faces.
Let's do it.
Let's talk report, please. Open discussion. Mr. Mitchell, please.
I think Liz hit her head first.
I just had a question. Thank you. Can you explain how the the canopy is is measured, you know, and how you account for the loss?
You're going to get into some technical things. It might be. Jeff, are you, Jeff's much more technical than I am. Jeff.
But I don't know that I'm that technical, Liz, to be able to answer your question specifically. But there there's basically aerial imagery. And they use that aerial imagery along with GIS information to map the various areas of coverage. So they're mapping streets, trees, ballfields, roofs of houses, et cetera. And then though all of those overlays become various area parcels, and then they use that to determine if there's been a gain or a loss in any particular area. So they can also point to new areas of development, you know, new roads cut in, new clearings, et cetera. And so one of the things they did note in the report, which I think is worth mentioning here, is that some of the loss that we saw was some restoration work that was done along Meadow Creek. There were significant trees that were taken out as part of that stream restoration work and the sewer line realignment, et cetera. But a lot of that is coming back up again and will eventually become canopy. But we are seeing losses elsewhere in the city relative to new development.
Thank you.
So you talked a little bit about the need to to develop canopy in private homes. Have you guys been talking to the to the homeowners there, landowners there? And are they receptive to us coming in and putting trees into their properties?
Yeah, that's a good question, Hosea. A couple of years ago, the tree commission went into the Belmont neighborhood with the, working with the tree stewards and worked for two years there knocking on doors and getting, you know, homeowners to plant trees. And that was very successful. Right now, And that was very successful. Right now, um, a- as, as we said, you know, uh, our, our, um, project tree commission and relief. We're doing a lot of education of young kids and teenagers to get them to understand the values of trees and nature. And we're hoping that's going to kind of bubble up. But also the tree stewards is already working, for instance, in Tenth and Page, and they've planted about fifteen trees, just going slowly door to door. You know, and so just in the last couple of months, they planted about fifteen trees. We've learned from like the nature conservancy that has done a lot of these projects that is pretty slow at first, you know, you get a few people to do it. Uh, you put signs up, say, you know, these trees provided by, and then other people start calling and say, I want a tree, I want a tree. So it takes a while, you know, to, to be successful.
I, I, I also like the, um, your, your suggestion that, uh, Chris and his team, Mark Smrek, be, um, more dialed into the flums down. So the fut- the future land lease map is done, but more read, more dialed into rezoning. Um, so good point that, uh, we make sure that Chris, his team and you guys, tree commission are dialed into, um, the rezoning that we do and the way we are configure the, the, the tree installations where, where we're going. So thank you for that. Um, I, 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 you guys were like, talked a little bit about why we've lost so many, uh, so, so much of our canopy. But you gave me like three or four reasons why we lost so much. What's the big reason? Why is it, is, is, is redevelopment driving the canopy out or what's, what, why, what's the big reason that's driving a loss?
Um, I'll just start. Jeff, you might want to fill in. Uh, the canopy study is not complete yet. They're, they're still working on it. Um, but it's been a lot of development, of course. Um, but as Jeff mentioned, there were two big projects, which sort of ironic, restore a stream and lose canopy. Um, but, um, you know, it's, it's a lot of its development. So we'll, we'll know more when it's finished. I can't answer that question completely, Hosea. I'm sorry.
And the other question is the, the, the loss of ash tree. Um, do we have a plan to replace the ash trees that we're going to take out because we want to take out? But also because of the, uh, infestation that they're dealing with. Do you have a plan to replace those ash trees?
Well, um, yeah, I mean, over the next five years, we're going to lose, these are just public trees and not private trees. Cause they're all, ash trees and less than three are all going to die. So we're going to lose at least three hundred. Um, our plan to replace depends on how much, uh, city council and planning commission allows us to plant new trees. So, you know, hopefully we'll be able to plant two hundred trees a year, um, for the, you know, for the foreseeable feature, future. Uh, of course, we're going, the, the ash trees are big trees and they're going to come down and we're going to be able to plant ten to twelve foot trees. So it doesn't compensate for the loss of canopy.
Mr. Chair, one more question out and I'll see.
Please.
To other commissioners. So yeah, so ash trees are big trees. What are we thinking about replacing them with? More ash trees or something?
Oh, no, 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 we wouldn't, no.
Yeah. Yeah. So what do we replace them?
Well, I hope that we can pla- replace them with shade trees, uh, you know.
What type of shade trees?
Well, oaks, you know, uh, maples, uh, sycamores, you know, lots of, I mean, we believe, you know, shade trees are going to be, do the most to combat climate change and improve the health of the community. So we'd like to replace them with large trees, but it takes a while for them to grow, you know.
My, my last question about relating today is like, in, in our lifetime, are we going to benefit from that or is this, are we doing this for our kids?
Hey, you're a lot younger than I am. So Hosea. I got a lot of grandkids and I have to worry about them. So. But you know, the other thing we want to do is preserve existing trees because all the scientists and the arborists are saying, if you, if you preserve the existing trees, that's going to do a lot more to combat climate change and make your community healthy. You know, so, so that's part of our program is to help people who can't afford it to be able to preserve their existing trees.
And just to piggyback on that, those, those ash trees that are coming out, that the city's removing are in the public right of way. And so trees really need to go back into those same locations. So they provide those same benefits. Cause shade trees along streets, shade streets, sidewalks, and help ameliorate some of those issues that we've had with, uh, you know, the urban heat island effects that we've talked about.
Mr. Stolzenberg, you've been tremendously patient. Would you like to ask your question?
Uh, yeah, no problem at all. Um, a couple of questions. Um, well, first off, uh, I noticed in the budget, uh, that the city manager released yesterday. Uh, tree planting is still at seventy-five thousand and not at the full hundred thousand that we recommended. So, uh, don't thank us yet, I guess. Um, and so that's about a hundred sixty-six strings per year, I guess, at the current, it's like four hundred fifty a tree, right? Um, so i- in the ash tree removal line item, is that just for removal or does that cover any amount of replacement as well?
No, that's basically just for removal. The arborist did a average cost to take down, uh, to clean up the ash trees. And, and you know, they're all, most of them are a bit huge and they're very expensive to remove. So that's really just for removal.
Yep. Okay. Um, and then, um, w- will you guys come and present to us again when the, uh, the canopy study is complete? Um, so I definitely have questions about that, but I don't want to be premature.
We'd love to.
Yeah, and we could supply it beforehand. So you get a chance to flip through it and look at some of the data. We had some questions about the data too, just some of the metrics that were used that, that, um, were part of their recommendations. So the tree commission had some, um, recommendations that were, uh, not in contradiction to those recommendations that were coming out of the report, but we just had questions about how they arrived at various recommendations.
I think Rory's just ideal. I think I recommend that you guys contact the chair and Ms. Chrissy so that, uh, Lyle and Missy can to you guys up to do it.
Okay, fantastic. We'd also love to talk to you about some of those code issues that Peggy, uh, mentioned in, in her part of the presentation. Uh, we've seen the, the sorts of things that written into code that have to do with, um, tree replacement. As either per caliber inch or being paid into a fund that would then fund future tree planting. Uh, effectively used in other municipalities, um, like Richmond, um, that's here in the Commonwealth and, and others around the country. And, and, you know, it's, it's, uh, I think it incentivizes developers to, to take a second look. You know, at a moment where they might be like, oh, well, that's just going to come out and I can replace it as part of this site plan standards that the city has. But if they actually have some, um, you know, they, they, they could be penalized for doing something that they, that they, you know, might be able to avoid. Uh, you can actually, uh, change some of those side plans for the better and then ultimately get some money for the city to be able to replace trees.
Additional questions?
We have a very, just follow up on Jeff. We have a very, uh, powerful codes committee that's working, uh, really hard. And plus it has a couple of lawyers on it, beware, uh, that is looking at codes and zoning. Uh, and, and wants to help the city. Uh, I think James has said he's very welcome to that. And I think he has ideas of his own too. Uh, about how we can make our, you know, codes and ordinances much stronger. Not, not only, you know, we're not just about trees. We're about all ki- you know, all natural resources, how we can, you know, have a denser city and have a healthier city.
Mr. Lahindra, please.
So one of the, um, uh, one of the impacts of this study, the, the tree canopy study and the discussion that we've had. Um, i- is going to, I think, uh, play an important role in the ordinance rewrite when we get to setbacks. And to my mind, and why I want to bring it up now, because I may not be around with, with, and if this issue comes, well, it should come up. Um, the issue of, you could have enough setback on paper, but we need to remember utilities and the conflict between utilities and, and trees. And really take a look at the kinds of clearances that the utilities department requires around, uh, their, their, uh, water lines and, and sanitary sewer lines and gas lines. Um, and, you know, there, there are clearances that ha- that have to be maintained between utilities. And then you clearances that have to be maintained between utilities and trees. And if you have the utilities going in the setback areas, you're not going to get any treats. So it's something to, to remember and to, uh, 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 ca- uh, include in the calculation of setbacks. Um, and, and how it works together and not just think, well, I've got a ten-foot setback, I can get a tree. And then the utility department comes in at the end and says, oh no, we got to put these utilities here and you, you can't have any trees. Um, so something to keep in mind as we go into the code, uh, the ordinance rewrite.
You know, Jody, that's why we call you the dean of the commission. Um, as I've been pushing, um, James and Sam and, uh, Missy to, uh, think about how we deal with the gas issues. That's something I hadn't thought about. So thank you for bringing that up. Was, yeah, yeah. The infrastructure issues have to be thought through. Can you come back again? My turn.
Hosea, you've been, oh, will you, will you be around? You'll be, you're deputized. You're deputized.
Mr. Habab, please.
Thanks. I was, I guess just to kind of continue that con- same conversation. Um, I was wondering if it had to do more with maybe number of trees along a frontage instead of a setback per se? If we want to find different ways to control, I don't know, I mean, if that works or not. But that way we're not constricting via setback maybe, but we're saying we want X amount of street trees per like lot, frontage on a street or something like that. And there's more room for creativity, maybe. I don't know if that's what works or not, but just throwing it out there.
Yeah. Thoughts on that one? I have a similar one. Courtyards. I like courtyards. I think you can plant trees in courtyards. Something to think about. We used to build courtyards with trees in them. We could do it again.
To my mind, the, uh, the slide that Peggy showed of Main Street and the difference between the standard and the, um, the lofts across the street and, and, and all the, you know, you go down Main Street, you don't think you have that many trees along it, but, uh, there really is. And there in front of the standard, all of a sudden, bang, nothing. And it's such a miserable place to walk next to. Oh, oh, I didn't say that.
Sorry, Bill.
Additional questions on, uh, this topic?
Yeah, and I, I hope when we, when we get into this discussion, we, uh, can really explore like the kind of role of the right of way in this. Um, and, and how we can get more trees into the right of way. Um, you know, I think of some very like residential streets, uh, like some in Belmont that have like fifty foot right of way widths, um, or you could easily have a bump out and put a tree. Um, and even the standard's a great example. It has those like little trees, kind of like tucked into those nooks. Um, but then it has those, those tiny planting strips with no trees. And then that bike lane, that's as big as a parking lane. So it's always full of cars parked. Whereas the bicyclist probably would have preferred if the planting strip was thicker so that there were trees there. Um, and it wouldn't be perfect for parking in. Um, and, uh, you know, I wonder if we can, we can look at our rules, uh, to make it make more sense, um, to be able to fit trees in front of buildings, even without, uh, significantly increasing setbacks by using that right of way. Um, I mean, depending on the right of way width, of course. Um, I had one question. Um, when the tree stewards are planting trees, uh, for example, in Tenth and Page, um, are, are they, I assume they're, they're doing it themselves? Um, and you know, is there an opportunity for, for example, if the city wanted to plant two hundred trees, but only had the money for one hundred fifty? Um, for those last fifty locations, could they have a wish list and say, hey, if you have the resources, put a tree here? Um, a- and could we potentially even save money that way? Cause we're, we have volunteers doing it, um, and get more planted? Or are we, are we worried about like liability issues or utility conflicts in the right of way with volunteer, things like the trees?
But you know, s- right now the city doesn't plant trees on private property. And, uh, you know, there are other communities, they bypass that by giving money to, um, people like the tree stewards or relief to help plant trees on private property. So that's one way to look at it. But right now, I guess it's a liability issue. Trees just don't, I mean, the city just does not plant trees on private property.
So Peggy, in the, in the, when, uh, the tree stewards, uh, did Belmont, um, we had, I mean, the tree commission, I was there. Uh, other tree commissioners were there, uh, cats were there and the, the residents were there. Um, the community was there helping to plant. So it was a, um, a, a big effort, uh, including everybody.
Yeah. And the city provided some mulch and, um, some equipment.
Chris Genzik was there, the, the city was, was, was helping out. So, uh, yeah, it, it was a, it was a great, it was a party.
Yeah.
You missed it, Rory.
Tree party.
Uh, another question, uh, this was something we talked a lot about with the, um, how was it? The, the strategic investment area. Parking and trees, uh, is parking space for trees? Is parking there because trees aren't? But how does that relationship work?
Um, well, I, trees and parking can coexist. I should send you a picture from, um, Burgundy, France. Uh, uh, they're called tree parks. It looks like a park of trees and trees are planted underneath them. I mean, you know, with tough urban trees, they don't need a lot of soil. They don't need a lot of setbacks. They can really survive in, in very small, uh, you know, amounts of soil. So, um, I think we need to, uh, look at our parking requirements and, and trees and loosen that up. Uh, you know, because it only helps, it cuts down the sha- uh, you know, the heat that we get from all that asphalt. So if you'd like, I'll send you a picture from Burgundy, France of their tree park.
That would, that'd be cool. If you could, please.
Mr. Habab, please.
Yeah.
That was my bad.
Ah, no worries. Uh, finally, uh, my, uh, uh, chance to get Mr. Palmer in trouble, uh, is that there are anything that large institutional, uh, landowners can do, uh, to help us with our tree troubles? Uh, say, for example, the city, the county and the university. I'll, I'll accept no i- i- as an answer, if that's the answer.
Is that a question for me, Lyle, or is that a general question?
That was a general question. The, I was, I was asking about the, the commission members on this one. Although you, you're welcome to weigh in. I think you have, you might have some insight.
Well, from my experience at the university, the university is a, is a, a model for the city. Um, the, the kind of care that they take, they've been treating their ash trees for many, many years now, um, to, to save them. Um, and, and they, they're adding trees all the time. They have a, a, an arboretum, uh, committee, uh, that, uh, reviews any, uh, uh, proposal to remove a tree. It has to be approved. Um, it, it's, they have two arborists on staff, um, that, uh, work at the university. It's, it's a model for the city and for, uh, any other organization. Yeah. So, yeah, we try hard to, you know, protect the trees we have for sure. Uh, but you know, to Jody's previous point, we struggle with the same things with like utility conflicts and, you know, new construction, uh, taking down existing trees. And, and we have to kind of reckon with that ourselves. And we have, you know, guidelines in place and we, we try to, uh, you know, all of our projects have landscape. Uh, architecture associated with them to, to bring back, you know, trees and stormwater and all those other, you know, natural systems. Um, I think a good place to look right now is, is the Ivy Corridor where there was a land, there was a landscape of trees there that's no longer there. And we are, you know, we'll be putting them back, but trees take time to grow. Uh, but the end result, thirty years from now, let's say twenty years from now, we'll, we'll be much better than what was there before. And, and also meet the needs of, of UVA's mission. So. It's a, it, it's a difficult subject. It's, it's definitely these, these canopies, you know, it's a point in time thing. So the hope is that, that if something is taken away twenty years from now, you'll, you'll see canopy back there, but that's not always the case.
the hope is that if something is taken away 20 years from now, you'll see canopy back there, but that's not always the case. That goes citywide.
Actually, there was something that I wrestled with as a project manager at the university for a long time, and I don't know, I'm not sure if it's still there, but there was a landscape fund that whenever you did a new project, whenever a project manager initiated a project at the university, a certain percentage had to go to a landscape fund, and that landscape fund could be used anywhere at the university. And what a great idea for developers at the city to have to put in a, an amount into a landscape fund that goes into trees and improving the landscapes around the city.
I hope you will memorialize that. No councils are on anymore, don't think, but that's, that's, that's a great idea. Yay.
There sure is a lot of grass on that lawn of yours. Maybe it's time to plant some trees and rename it the woods.
I'd be surprised how many trees are on the lawn, too, and it's true.
That would be better than some of the buildings that have been proposed in the past.
Don't be missing my lawn.
Additional questions on the presentation? I would entertain a motion at this time.
What motion are you looking for?
At 7:08 PM, with this item resolved, I would entertain a motion to close up and go home.
Oh, okay, go. Hey Peggy, let's, you and I chat offline about 10th and Page and what you guys are trying to do. We can meet over beer, whatever. I like what you guys are doing.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff and Peggy.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you all.
Yeah.
Good night.
Okay.
Let's say peace out.
So with that, I make a motion that we adjourn until the second Tuesday in April.
Second?
Second motion?
I hear a second. Can I get some thumbs up? I see thumbs. See you next time. Thank you all.
I have a question. Ooh, real quick. Lyle, do we have a work session or Missy I should ask? Do we have a work session this month?
We do not.
I didn't see it. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing anything.
They'll come back. It's going to get busy.
No worries. Okay, thank you. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.